Subtractions about the agenda?
I made the motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's approved. Now, we will go into recognitions and presentations. Dr. Hester?
Alright, so first we're gonna start off with, um, we every year like to recognize our NCPS employees who are also veterans. And so, I don't think any of our veterans were able to make it this evening. This is a super, uh, between our veterans and some of our One Nelson winners, it is a super busy evening, as we learned. So, um, but, some of you may have noticed that on Facebook, uh, we presented individual, um, thank yous to each of our veterans. And I just, uh, what each one of them, we have seven employees who were former service members, and, uh, each of them will receive this certificate. And on the certificate, it says, "A special thank you goes out to our NCPS employees who are veterans. Your service did not end when your military career did. You continue to serve with dedication each day in support of our students, staff, and the Nelson County community. We are proud to call you colleagues, and we are thankful for your example. We honor you today and always." And so, I will also name, um, uh, read out the names of our individuals who did serve. So, um, Shemaine Daye is our, uh, NCHS School Counselor, and she served in the Army from 1988 to 1992. Steve Washington, uh, who is our Middle School Lead Custodian, and he served in the Army from 1987 to 1992. Zach Wingate, High School School Counselor, he served in the Air Force from 1999 to 2003. Rachel Spalding is our Middle School sped teacher, and she served in the Navy from 2007 to 2015. And Carrie Bryant, served in the Marines, and she is currently a Rockfish River Elementary School kindergarten teacher, and she served from 1996 to 2004. Dan Stromberg, who is also at Rockfish River Elementary School as a PE teacher, served in the Navy from 1990 to 2001. And I believe, last but not least, is Mr. Leander Robinson, who is a high school custodian, and he served in the Army multiple times. Uh, he served active 1987 to 1995 in the reserves, from 1995 to 2003, and again, active again in 2009 to 2018. So I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you so much, um, to all veterans, and we had a great time celebrating them this past Tuesday, um, in multiple celebrations in each one of our buildings, um, but also, especially, a big thank you to all of our employees who, um, who are considering to serve with us, but they are, are veterans, and we appreciate their service and dedication. So, thank you so much, and... (applause) Okay, next up are our, uh, One Nelson Award winners. Um, so I'm going to, um, be able to read, um, we know a couple of our individuals weren't able to make it with us today, um, but a couple of them did, so we're gonna start out there. So, um, with us today, what we do is, for those of you who don't know, One Nelson Award is for all those individuals who are nominated by, uh, could be by peers, it could be by any number of individuals, who represent and, and reflect that One Nelson mentality of it takes all of us to, um, have a successful school division and, and allow to create opportunities for a successful pathway for all of our students. So there's four categories. We have a student category, we have a community category, we have a classified staff category, and we have a certified staff category. So the first person that I will call up today is Ms. Sarah Bell. (applause) So, congratulations. So, Ms. Bell is a, a school nurse at Rockfish River Elementary School, and she, uh, don't worry, she's gonna take some pictures, um, so we'll make it as awkward as possible. Serves as a nurse at Rockfish River Elementary School, and also works with us through Blue Ridge Medical Center. So we appreciate all that she does, was nominated multiple times. And so, Sarah Bell is the school nurse at Rockfish River Elementary School, and the school nurse coordinator for NCPS. Sarah provides compassionate care with a high level of positive energy that brightens the day for everyone around her. She's being recognized for her above and beyond attitude and her meaningful and impactful work. Nurse Bell recently arranged for a mobile vision center to visit each of the schools to provide free eyeglasses to students in need. Her, and I think you just celebrated that. That was, uh, finished it up this week? Or last week?
Uh, almost.
Almost, oh, almost finished, okay. Her efforts led to dozens of students receiving care that they may not have been able to otherwise. Sarah Bell truly exemplifies the One Nelson spirit, and while having a smile on her face, thank you for all that you do. And she is also one of the individuals that any kind of themed day there is, she is all in participating along with the students. So we want to say thank you so much, congratulations. I'm gonna give you this, we're gonna take a picture real quick. (applause) And we're gonna come over here just a little bit, 'cause that podium, alright? Perfect, thank you, I'm gonna give you a mug real quick, too. There you go. Perfect, thank you, congratulations.
(applause)
Alright, Ms. Madeline, will you join us, please? (applause) Madeline Bell is certified, um, she's a math teacher, and also serves as a math coach, uh, for, um, our secondary-level, um, teachers. And so, Madeline exemplifies dedication, compassion, and excellence in education. She consistently goes above and beyond to support her students, not only in mathematics, but in all aspects of their academic and personal growth. Her classroom is a place of encouragement and high expectations, where students feel empowered to challenge themselves and succeed. Ms. Bell makes herself available before and after school, offers individualized support, and creates innovative learning opportunities that make math both accessible and engaging. Thank you for all that you do to make a difference. So we want to say thank you so much, congratulations. We're gonna have this nice lady take our picture, come over here, alright? Congratulations, let me get you your mug. There you go, thank you. We had two other recipients, um, our student, yep, congratulations. Our student representative had practiced this evening, so she was not able to make it. Her name is Riley Turner, and she is a middle school student. Riley Turner consistently demonstrates leadership through kindness, respect, and integrity. She leads quietly but powerfully, choosing actions that support and uplift others, rather than seeking recognition for herself. Riley is known for treating classmates and adults with genuine courtesy and empathy. She listens thoughtfully, shows patience, and is quick to offer encouragement or assistance. Whether in academic settings, group activities, or in the softball field, she displays teamwork, humility, and strong character. So I want to say congratulations to Riley Turner. I will find her someday, tomorrow, in class, and we'll be able to present this to her in person, so her classmates can see it. (applause) And then, our classified staff recipient is Mr. Marshall Beeler, and he, um, sent his apologies that he was not gonna be able to make it, um, this evening. But Marshall Beeler is being recognized for the profound impact he makes within NCPS. The backbone of our school system's day-to-day operation is our digital education network. Marshall's impeccable attention to detail and labor impacts every student, teacher, staff member, and administrator in the county. He continuously builds his own knowledge and skillset, ensuring a consistently functioning, fast, and secure network for all. Recently, Mr. Beeler was called upon to assist in the implementation of the new Vows Tracker. This new tool is a major component of the Virginia Literacy Act, and will be used by all English teachers, grades through through eight. The initial rollout involved numerous updates, which Mr. Beeler promptly implemented. Um, NCPS thanks Mr. Beeler for his tremendous behind-the-scenes impact, expertise, collaboration, humor, and forward-thinking in ensuring that we remain regional leaders in the delivery and support of our educational network. So we want to say congratulations to Mr. Beeler. (applause) Okay, I think we got our SEA kids up next, is that right? Alright, so where are my Rockfish River Elementary School SEA students that were involved in the Veterans Day Assembly? Come on up here, we won't bite. (applause) Yep, just come on, make a little line right here, you're good. Someone's gotta stand next to me, it's okay. (laughter) Okay.
(inaudible)
So, on Tuesday, uh, was Veterans Day, and we were able to hold our annual Rockfish River Elementary School Veterans Day Assembly. But we're, weren't, we would not have been able to hold that if it weren't for our, um, SEA student representatives. And so, rather than me talk about what it is that they did, I wanted them to be able to come up here and introduce themselves, and talk about the role that you had in putting on the Veterans Day Assembly. For those of you who aren't really as familiar, they do a phenomenal job of inviting community members from all over. There's a guest speaker, this year's guest speaker was Sergeant Bodak. Yep, Sergeant Bodak works for our, um, our Sheriff's Office. And so, year in and year out, they have a special guest, they do a lot to try to support. And so, these individuals were instrumental in being able to put this assembly on. So now, I invite you to introduce yourself, and tell a little bit about what you did for the assembly. So we'll start with you, yes?
Um, okay.
Say your name, yeah?
My name is Madeline Wenzheimer, and I was, I spoke in the assembly.
Yes, what did you speak about?
Um, I introduced myself, and I announced the Pledge of Origin.
Yes, you did, yeah.
And what was supposed to be America the Beautiful.
It turned, it was, it turned into the National Anthem. Good, good times, um, anyway. It sounded really good, it sounded really nice. Did you carry a flag?
No.
No, you didn't carry, so you introduced, and you said the pledge, awesome, good job. Alright, next up, who's our next?
So, I'm Brandon, and I was holding the Army flag, and I didn't get to it.
So, Brandon marched in, um, what they had an opportunity, is they, they marched in with the flags of each of the branches, and then, they were able to stand there and hold the flags as the band played, um, the theme songs from each of the branches. And so, he was able to stand there, and he represented, you said you held the Army flag?
Yeah.
That's awesome, congratulations, good job. Alright, next up?
Hi, I'm James Ness, I held the Navy and Spartanian flag.
Okay, yes, same thing, was able to march in, um, and was able to hold the flag really steady, and was able to, to be a part of all of that, so thank you, good job. Oh my gosh, don't leave me hanging, don't leave me... (laughter) That could've been rough, that could've been rough. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Caffey LaChance, and I was holding the US Marines flag.
Okay, yes. It, did anything significant this week happen for the Marines? Anything at all? On Monday?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, happy, happy.
Happy birthday, yes, happy birthday for the Marines.
My dad's birthday.
Yes, yes, can anybody tell me what year? Anybody in the audience?
250.
250, so it was a big one, it was a big one, so good job, wait, good job for remembering. What else did you do? You held the flag?
Um, we sang.
Yes, yes, and you guys did sing, so good job, awesome, way to remember that. Next up?
Hi, I'm Kelly Tyree, and I was holding the American flag for the whole entire thing.
Yes, yes you did. Yes. Uh, and which was, yes, the whole thing, 'cause it was, there was a length of, of time, so that was not easy, and you did a great job, and, um, it, it stayed the tallest, and it never, you never stumbled, and you did a great job, so awesome, good job. Last but not least?
I'm Percy Wenzheimer, and I, um, I spoke in the Veterans Assembly.
Yes. What did you speak about? Do you remember?
I congrat, um, I congratulated, um, the, the band on their awesome performance.
Yes.
Um, and I introduced, um, Mr. Meek.
Yes, good job.
I remember.
Yes, awesome, good job. So, thank you guys so much, we wanted to take an opportunity, one, it is not easy to get up in front of all these individuals and talk, and I know some of you may have been a little bit nervous, but you all, you all deserve to be able to be recognized for your role, 'cause that's a really important, um, event, it's a, it's a big event in Rockfish River's year, but it's also a big vent, uh, to be able to continue to carry that torch of remembering and being thankful for the service of our veterans. So thank you guys so much for being here. Families, we're gonna get some pictures, so now would be a good time also to get some pictures. So I'm gonna ask you guys to kind of come over this direction, and get a little bit closer, and get that podium out of the way. Yep, so some kind of, just get right in front, yep, step, three steps, perfect, one right here, perfect, yes, like you've done this before. Alright, yes, you guys, alright, we ready?
Yay. (inaudible)
Brandon, look at your mom. (laughter) Oh, you got a mom, okay, good. Congratulations, guys, thank you so much. Good job, good job, way to get up there, good job. (applause) Switching gears?
Switching gears. And we are going into a little bit of budget. Yes.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you, guys. Alright. So we are transitioning into, um, so every November, we, uh, provide an opportunity for our, um, hey, how about that? That's probably not what I meant to hit, huh? Okay, there we go. Uh, an opportunity for a pre-budget, uh, public hearing, but what we decided to do a little differently this year is provide a little bit background information on how we actually develop the budget. So this is in by no means great detail about what our budget actually is, but rather, an explanation of how we go about, um, creating it. So I'm just gonna go ahead and do it the old-fashioned way. So, basically, what we try to do is a financial plan. Your budget represents all the things that you value, and what you deem important in order to be successful, and our mission to help our students achieve academic success and to reach their full potential. We cannot do this alone. We solicit input from our staff, our teachers, our administration, this formally began in October. So we, uh, put out information to our principals, our administrators, and our supervisors of each of the departments, please contribute what your needs and what your wants are. Uh, so that starts in October. We conduct a pre-budget public hearing to gather budget priorities from the board, from our, our community, from individuals who are wanting to provide that feedback. That starts typically in our November meeting. We also consult with the school board for input and prioritization for requests. That is ongoing, that is a constant conversation that we have, but we really start to kind of begin to formalize that in November with the pre-budget, and then that carries on through the finalization of the process. Um, you know, in the last couple of years, that's been at the very end of June, it's just been, um, with all the different budgets taking place over the course of the years, um, so it is a pretty lengthy process. Um, we also want to be able to finalize our budget, we have a, a deadline of April 1st to finalize our budget, and to send it to the county, we try to get that done sooner, so they can begin to incorporate that into their overall budget. We also consult with county administration as to expected costs, as well as expected revenue streams for the coming year. That is ongoing throughout the year. I have a standing monthly meeting with, um, Ms. McGary, the county administrator, we have those conversations. Our school board, um, also has conversations, um, not only, um, with us, but, uh, we work hard to try to create opportunities for joint meetings, and two-by-two meetings where, um, conversations with the Board of Supervisors can take place. We've been able to hold a joint meeting, I believe, in April for the last couple of years, um, in which we're able to share a lot of information about how did we build our budget, what is involved in it, and all the contributing factors. I think one of the things that is important to address is, there's a lot of vocabulary and terms that are every day for us, but they are not as familiar to our community, even at times, people who work with it a lot. So, things like, and, this is, will be posted, this will be available, and just so you guys know, um, we created a important budget vocabulary list, uh, where it kind of breaks down what each of these terms means. Now, I'm not gonna read through each of these in this presentation right now, but for those of you who, who think, "I would really like to learn more about standards of quality", you'll hear us talk about the local composite index. We'll talk about the local composite index quite a bit, because it has such an impact on the funds that we get from our locality, and the funds that we get provided to us from the state. It is a complicated formula, this is something that we talk about, the impact of our LCI. We should be getting the LCPI later in November, um, early December, we're really hoping to get it in November, so we can anticipate what, um, some immediate, uh, costs are gonna be for us, and so we can create our budget a little bit more effectively. Like I said, a little bit further into the, the presentation, we'll talk a little bit more details about this, but these conversations are incorporated to each of our budget presentations, as well as our joint, um, meetings that we have with the Board of Supervisors, we talk about the local composite index, we talk about SOQs. So, I just wanted to point that out, that this has a lot of really good information, if it just breaks down what some of the definitions of these are, so you don't get lost. I will draw your attention to the per pupil expenditure, 'cause as we talk about it, uh, this is a number that, uh, the, the Virginia Department of Education posts, we posted on our website. These are all those things that have to be factored in, and they get broken down per, obviously, student. So we have experienced a decline in enrollment, and so when your enrollment declines, those costs still go up because of these very factors. When you want to maintain small class sizes, competitive salaries, um, the geography and the topography of our county does not change regardless of the enrollment that we have. That maintains the same, so there's transportation costs, building costs, fuel costs, size and age of schools, size and age, or the, um, ages of our bus fleets. Um, like it or not, just like us, when our buildings, when our buses get older, they're not quite as efficient, they, they require a little bit more upkeep, and so, all of those factors go into the per pupil expenditure. So I wanted to just draw some attention to those phrases, so you'll, 'cause you may hear them, and it just helps a little bit to keep clear, um, what you're trying to think about and consider when building the budget. Okay, so, enrollments, how do we look at enrollment, how do we project enrollment? Well, we look at live births from five years ago, um, and we take a look at the number of live births, and then we try to, each year, advance it one year. So, if we know what we have in kindergarten, we try to anticipate what we have in first grade. How do we anticipate what we have in kindergarten? Those live births going back five years, that is the starting point that we use. So you see here, um, a kind of a breakdown of those, um, numbers, pre-K to five, and then, six to 12. So I'm not expecting anybody to memorize these numbers, we'll talk about enrollment a little bit later, but we do factor in the impact of enrollment. Using projected numbers, we then estimate the number of sections that are needed to make these classes, we talked about small class sizes, so we need to make sure that we take into account what are the numbers of students that we're gonna have at each of these grades, how many teachers will it require in order to satisfy the standards of qualities, and then also maintain the best possible learning environment for our students and our staff. So this doesn't only deal with just teachers, this deals with counselors, it deals with administrators, it deals with instructional assistants, it deals with a lot of different individuals that we factor into this number. Looking at staffing changes, this is also part of the consideration, um, we take, when we look at budgets, if we have a year where we have, uh, more retirements, more than likely, those individuals are on the higher end of our salary scales. Typically, when we, um, hire people in, it, you anticipate those individuals being on the lower end of the salary scale. Doesn't happen every single time, sometimes you get veteran teachers in who see what we have to offer, and they want to finish their years out here, but sometimes you bring in younger, and that can create that, um, difference in salary or personnel costs. So we take a look at those resignations or retirements, as well as promotions, um, if we move someone out of the building up into central office, or we take someone who's an instructional aide, and they become a teacher, uh, there, we take into consideration all of that. Now, one thing that is pretty universal is 80% of our budget is tied to personnel costs. So 80% is invested in our people, and that is something that I think is really, really important to understand. Uh, we are very labor-intensive, that is, that is what drives our budget. Factors that we consider, um, so, a part of the, the, the personnel is the salaries and the benefits, so what drives our decision-making on that? Well, the governor's budget, the governor's budget comes out a little bit, uh, typically around mid-December, we are anticipating the governor's budget coming out, it's December 17th this year. Um, we can anticipate more than likely two governor's budgets, because we have a transition of administrations. So we'll have, um, Governor Youngkin's budget coming out around December 17th, and then we can, we can assume or anticipate that, um, Governor Alex Bamberger will have a budget coming out. I couldn't tell you when that would be, um, that is, I would imagine that is something that they are working on right now, but I couldn't possibly project what that date would be. Then, you add to that, you have the House and the Senate also working on their own budgets. So we are heavily reliant, the governor's budget is really what kind of sparks the, the development of our budget, because that drives the, um, the calculation tool. So we'll talk a little bit more about the calculation tool. Also, things that drive it, Consumer Price Index, Target Market, who are we competing with, um, what does it take in order to be able to fill the positions that we have and to maintain? And positions in the state at key intervals. Um, we've done pretty extensive, um, study of salaries, particularly for teachers. Uh, the, the school board back in, I believe it was 2012, 2013, established a goal of being in the top 25, um, so there has been very targeted effort in bringing our teacher salaries up to be able to, those competitive levels. In the last two years, we've really recognized that, um, years of service, particularly as you go 15 years and above, was, um, not as competitive with the divisions that we directly compete with, as, as we needed it to be. So we've really identified, um, not just for teachers, but for all staff, on years of service, being able to, um, really target them for salary increases, because that also provides, um, a better basis for, uh, the retention, and having them serve out through that loyalty of, um, being able to support them. That's a group picture, individually, we look at job responsibilities, we look at experience, time commitment, skill level required for the position, and licenses and certifications required. Estimating the cost of employee fringe benefits, including health insurance, we've just recently met with, um, some, uh, of our health consultants to try to get an understanding of what we can anticipate our health costs to be, um, we will continue to keep, um, consulting with them, so we can have a, a good estimate. That, health insurance for us is one of a competitive, competitive aspect of our personnel costs, um, how we try to, to take care of our employees, particularly when it comes to insurance. Other things are, at retirement, we, um, we're pretty excited that the VRS came out, and it looks like there's a drop in 2%, that that can really help us out, um, so we'll see how that shakes out in our overall budget. Our fringe benefits are about 25% of an employee's compensation package, and rates can fluctuate yearly. So we work really, really hard to not only have good, solid salary, but the benefits aspects, um, to be able to hold on to our staff, and to recruit, um, high-quality individuals and to retain them. Estimating another aspect, so you have your personnel costs, um, and then, we transition, we have these other costs, like cost of fuel and utilities. Uh, we look at the usage, we take, we evaluate, every, every month, we get a bill, and we take a look at the energy costs, and, because that can often be an indicator of a problem. If you see a big jump in costs, if you see, you know, any kind of significant change, that is an indication of, of an issue that we have to address. So we take a look at the past usages, and making, um, some estimates of what we can anticipate. We check, we check the farmer's almanac, we, we check projections of weather, um, so we can have a thought about what to anticipate. Obviously, the weather does whatever the weather wants to do, and that's hard to harness, but we try really hard just to at least kind of pay attention to that and anticipate. Our buildings are aging, and will require more and more maintenance. Um, our newest building is over 22 years old, and we hear all the time, like, "Well, your new building, that was 2003." I don't know about you, but my body, uh, felt drastically different in 2003 than it does now, and so, the same thing happens with buildings. So, um, the middle school is the newest, constructed in 2003. The high school is kind of, um, the island of misfits, um, it's been built on, and built on, and built on, and so, portions constructed in 1954, then in 1975 and 2003, where we significantly overhauled some facility needs. We are currently going through a renovation, um, to be able to address and bring it up to current standards. Those things will not necessarily be abundantly visible from the outside, but, uh, for, for our staff that are in the rooms, that are getting handed back to them, they're starting to see, it's lighter, it's brighter, it's more accessible, it's better usage, we are working on the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing aspects, those things that the infrastructure has got to be addressed if we can, if we want to continue to use our building, and have, um, a good, safe atmosphere for our students and our staff. Rockfish was constructed in 1999, HVAC replacement and control upgrades are desperately needed, that is an area that we know, um, will require attention. Ty River was constructed in 95, we do need to pave the parent drop-off area, and remove old water tank and mobile unit. We look at our inventory and our capital improvement plan to see what major equipment we need. Buses has been, um, buses have been something that we have talked about, uh, since the time I've been here, like, we've talked about, we've had an aging fleet, and the need, um... Like, we've talked about, we've had an aging fleet and the need to replace them on a 15-year cycle. That is the recommended replacement cycle. We also work with our Chromebooks and create a replacement cycle for those. So those are, those resources that we have to maintain and continue to keep using, and so that requires the upkeep and the maintenance and the payment cycles. Modern learning in school, and I think one of the things we hear about, like, it wasn't like that in my day. There's a lot of things that have changed, and it is so much more than, like, let's get it to them as cheap as we can. We talked about Marshall Beeler being instrumental and being able to provide us the safety and security that we have in our internet. Like the rest of the world, a lot of what we do is dependent on technology, different aspects of technology, the safety and security of our cyber presence, and so there's a lot of things that go into this, and to provide the best possible learning environment. We project our revenue using the following information. So I referenced the calculation tool, or the Calc tool, that is put out to us by the Virginia Department of Education. We hope to get that. So that is dependent on the governor's budget. So once the governor budget gets presented, then the people at VDOE start furiously working on building the calculation tool. So basically, it is an enormous workbook spreadsheet that personalizes the data to Nelson County Public Schools. So we go in there, and we select Nelson County, and then it auto-fills all these categories specific to our school division, and it calculates the impacts of the local composite index. You know, it factors in all of these different things that will drastically impact the money that we receive from the state. We also calculate a lot of things that come to us from the federal government. So that is something that, you know, we take a look at the Calc tool, we, that, every time a new budget comes out, they redo the calculation tool. So we'll have the governor's budget, and then we'll have to take a look at the House and Senate when that comes back out. I've got to imagine, if a second governor's budget comes out, they will redo that back, they will redo that then. It's so comprehensive that that tool is very necessary for us to accurately and appropriately calculate what we anticipate getting from the state. Other things, federal grants. We receive a great deal of money from Title I, Title II. So Title I is our at-risk, low-income qualifications for our students. We have two elementary schools that are Title I schools. That doesn't mean that our other two are not eligible. They just have not been established as Title I. We also have Title II, Title III, Title IV, 6B, pre-K, Perkins, and school nutrition. Okay, those are our federal grants that we get. But on the state side, we get state grants for dedicated purpose, various things. We have fees for services and local contribution. And so as you see on the right, all the different kind of categories of where we receive our revenues. And by all means, if you have a question, please stop me. I'm more than happy to clarify or answer any questions. Government shutdowns, unfunded mandates, and I think it's also necessary to also say underfunded mandates. There is a lot of unfunded, but then there's also drastically underfunded mandates, and they are increasing every year. We get budget cuts that have potential to our impact or budget in a negative manner. I think we are, you know, as we were at the beginning of the school year, when we talked about the possible impact of federal cuts to our programs, all the different areas that it could impact, we're very fortunate when it comes to our Title I funds and our Title III funds, that we get them upfront. We got our money upfront, so we were able to secure that, and that was, that was very, very good. We don't know what that will be like for next year. And our federal grants are also tied to personnel. So that is something to really think about, and personnel, things like reading specialists, really important roles to the success of our students. The uncertainty of grant funds continuing in the local match requirements are important aspects to monitor as we move into the next future years. So we talked about the local composite index. It determines a school division's ability to pay education. It is based off of true value of real property, adjusted gross income, and taxable retail sales. Another aspect of the LCI is also a component of enrollment. Beyond the enrollment factor, schools don't have an impact on this. And even with enrollment, sometimes schools don't have an impact on that. So it's really important to understand that we advocate, we have been advocating, I can only speak to my presence here in Nelson for three years, we have been advocating to the state that this is a difficult way to continue funding schools, particularly in rural resort areas, areas much like Nelson, that it's drastically a tale of two counties. We advocate for that. We understand that that places, it places a responsibility much greater on our local government in terms of the funding structures. We recognize that. We advocate that there's got to be a better way. There has been a J-LARK study that has studied overall education budgets and salaries and things of that nature, and they do address the LCI. I think it's just super difficult when you try to put all 132 school divisions into the same formula, because it's dependent on how well other counties are doing. And I think that that's just, it's super difficult. We experienced a large jump from the 2024 to the 2026 biennium. Our impacts, our composite index for Nelson County was at .6645. So two years ago, we were sitting here talking about the $1.2 million deficit that we were starting out before we ever put a pencil to paper to start drafting up what our needs are. And so I think that's something that, we know the LCI is going to be coming out. We know it'll come out, well, we wanted to come out in later November, but later November, early December, that will drive a lot of what takes place. It basically identifies the wealth of a locality and what the state believes the locality can put towards schools.
Right. So what you're saying is, if I can repeat it, is that our LCI is .66. That means that of anything that the state is going to fund here in Nelson, that the locality has to map, has to pay 66% of that.
Yeah, yes. So what the state is saying by using this formula is that it is anticipating, or it has determined, that the locality is able to fund 66.45% of the budget, and that the state will match 33.55%. Again, our enrollment factor is in that, but value of real estate, adjusted gross income, and taxable retail sales drives this. So things that, you know, you want to celebrate when you're getting, you know, taxable retail sales, all of that, but it has this impact on the LCI.
So one thing for us, and we've talked about this over the years, is that because we're unique in a resort community, a resort county, our real estate values are inflated, for some people, overinflated, because that's not how many of our citizens in the community can live. Having said that, it does make us look like, and we're one of the higher LCIs across the state, correct?
The highest you can be is .8.
And so I think the last ranking I saw...
Before, it was like .5885 or something like that, and then we jumped to .664. I mean, that was a big jump.
Yeah, in one year with no help.
Yes.
More than just being a resort. I mean, Wengren has a huge impact on this county, but our economy is an agritourism economy, and we basically invite people to come here and visit and also live here. People like to retire here and things like that, and all of those pressures have made the property values go up and has helped increase that LCI.
Economy, people that live here. One of the things that we've talked about, and we're going to talk about the legislative actions that we take as a board, is that as a VSBA group, we really work hard to advocate against that LCI, because communities, we're a little unique, but unique communities like us really suffer from this LCI formula to some degree, because we just look so hot, and it's not reflective of our full community.
And not that this helps our case this year or even next year, but can you speak for a second about how odd it is that Virginia funds the way they fund compared to other states?
Yeah, I, don't hold me to it, but we, I want to say it could be eight to 10 other states do it this way. Like, we are definitely in the minority of how we fund our schools using this formula. And I think it's, you know, Mr. Chief and I sat in with a meeting with Delegate Griffin, along with Mr. Rutherford, where we outlined, like, this, and we have to remember, a lot of these delegates don't have a strong working knowledge of what the local composite index is. This is our world. This is what we really work off of, because it's so impactful, but to the bigger picture, our local delegates, our statewide, may, we can't assume that they have a strong working knowledge of what it is and how it impacts us. And so we had, you know, with Jesse Rutherford, you and myself, working, meeting with him and his aide, to talk about, this is what the LCI is. This is what goes into it, and this is the impact that it's having on us. And I think it, I felt like it was pretty eye-opening.
It was, and when you, sorry, but it's amazing to a person, when I've had these conversations, be it that meeting or other conversations I've had with people in the public or other elected officials that are at different levels than at the county, the county understands it. I mean, they feel the pain just like we do. Once you explain what the LCI is and how the funding formula works, the light bulb goes off, and they're like, oh, wow. The problem is, it's a political football. I mean, you can't, it's not high on a lot of people's priority list to fix, because it's, it's not something that most people know anything about, and it's going to take some time and some political, political...
Will.
Will maneuvering and whatever.
Will, meaning, oh, what?
This is, it's something that's going to have to be fixed in Richmond, and hopefully it will soon.
I think that the J-LARK study is really good reading for those people who are really want to dive into this or should be diving into this. But, and there's a good Cardinal News article about it that's more like easy reading compared to the J-LARK study, and I think it's about 12 other states that, and I don't think it's the LCI that's the part that really kind of kills us. I think it's the SO, maybe it's the SOQ, but it's the per-pupil funding versus per-staffperson funding. I think that's the difference between us and the other, we are based on a...
Standards of quality, yeah.
Yeah. I think our funding is based on the number of kids we have in the class, not the number of people that we have to employ, because the standards of quality covers about 2/3 of our, the people that we need to hire to be able to run our schools. So when they say, oh, we're going to fund you 33% of, you know, what we're going to give you, they're only giving you 33% of 2/3 of our positions.
The mandate.
Right.
And that's the mandate. It goes even further than just the LCI.
Right, right.
If any locality in the state of Virginia started running their schools strictly on an SOQ budget with SOQ personnel, it would be, yeah, it would be riot revolt, something. I mean, it would be, you know, I mean, the numbers, when I first got on the board, that's one of the things, I didn't know anything about it, so learn about it. So I started learning about it, and I'm like, oh, okay, so that's...
We used that for the, for the vice, the assistant principal thing, and we...
We did, exactly right.
That's not work.
And that was a mistake, exactly right.
Well, I think that's a great reference, because I think these formulas are created many, many, many years ago, and the education system was just different. We are, we shoulder the responsibility of a great deal of things that go just beyond reading, writing, arithmetic, the mental health components that we provide supports for, because there's a critical lack of access, not just here in Nelson. We're feeling this. I've just come back from a conference with other colleagues, and the behaviors that we are seeing now, particularly at our young, our younger students, our K through 2, but we're seeing it in the older, because we still have students who are coming out of COVID, but some of these behaviors, I think, if we really take a step back, we can acknowledge they were beginning before COVID. They may have been exacerbated, but the frequency and the severity of the behaviors that our staff are seeing in the classrooms are, they are much greater. And they aren't the type of thing where you can just go have a quick conversation and then get them back and going, you know? The times of, like, you've just got to do this, and then you move on, like, these issues that we are working through require an investment of time and energy and certificates. You know, our counselors, the need for crisis counselors, the need for all these different individuals and what they are working with our kids, and our families. Our families in the community are experiencing these same health, mental health crises, whether it be drugs, mental health, or the, I'm on drugs because of my mental health. There are a lot of aspects that we now shoulder, because we can't teach math or English if a child is dysregulated, and the other students in the classroom. And there, I get this all the time, can we just send them to another school? Those other schools have long waiting lists, and can, if it's a residential day, it could cost $100,000. Ivy Creek, those types of slots are $63,000. So there are some things, this magical school that we can send these kids off to, it's not there, and they're not staffed well. They're having trouble.
Those resources are glinting because of such a demand.
Yes. There's shortages of individuals and experts in these areas all over. They're not going to higher education to get trained for these positions, so they're not coming out of the colleges for us to hire. So then we have to adjust our standards and who we look to hire for these positions, and they're, you know, they're not as qualified as some of these needs that we have. And I know that's kind of getting off a little bit, but like, you know, we recognize there's a need for counselors. We recognize there's a need for behavioral supports. That's why the need for the additional, or bringing back the full-time assistant principal was so critical, is because of the needs of what it takes to, the increased responsibility of instruction, and all the different standards, and all the different tests, and all the different data points that have been added to it. So instructionally, but discipline and behavior aspects, attendance. I know everybody loves to talk about attendance, but we have to walk it back and recognize there's aspects associated to the code. We are held responsible for these things. We're held responsible for the behaviors. We're held responsible for attendance. We're held responsible for the instructional outcomes, all of these together. And at no point in time did I mention funding in that. This isn't about money. This is about success. And I think that that's, we have to be willing to invest in that, because it is coming to a critical time where we have to be able to support this. So the SOQs don't address all the staff members that we need to be successful. It's an archaic formula that needs to be redone, but we also have to be very, very careful, because at some point, we talk about the size of divisions, or we talk about, someone said, well, why do we pay teachers in Nelson as much as someone else who has a bigger enrollment? Because they still have to teach in the classroom. Like, they still have the same job. An administrator still has the same job, if not bigger, with fewer staff because of the enrollment, but it's the same expectations of success. It's the same expectation of safety. It's the same expectation regardless if you have 10 kids in your classroom, 20 kids, or 30 kids, the same expectations. And so that's what we have to keep an eye on, and it's just, it's not the same as when we went to school. It's not the same as 10 or 15 years ago. So I think it's important to keep that in mind.
Okay, just one thing. When we talk about our budget, it's not, all of these things go into our budget, and we present a budget to the county, and then they decide if those monies are necessary for them to fund us. So we, on, for Dr. Hester and her staff, then they have to go back and make adjustments to fit what they say they want to give us. It's not that the state says, here, school board, this is your money, then, but the county gets to adjust it how they want to distribute it in some cases. They have mandates like 3% raises, or whatever they say the governor says he wants to do, then we have to figure out how to do those things.
Because that's, the money we'll get from education is not only for the SOQ positions, not for every employee.
Not for every employee.
And sometimes those monies are dependent on local matching, too.
And I will say, you know, there is a minimum that needs to be funded, and I, you know, I will say that we get, we get well above the minimum.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that, and I appreciate the work of, you know, Ms. McGary and her crew to try to work with us to understand this. I appreciate that they were able to get our budget in the beginning, so they knew exactly what everybody was dealing with. I think that's important. I think it's just, the bare minimum is not going to get you, you know, good enough is not enough. It's not good enough. And so, not because that's what we feel like or what we want, like, we can show it. We pride ourselves in building a budget of success, and it's needs-based. By the code, it's needs-based, but we try really hard to be, to be pretty thoughtful and responsible with the funds that we get.
Yes.
Because I, I mean, I am a resident. I am a resident. I know it is important and critical to be very fiscally responsible with the funds of our citizens and our residents, you know? But I also know that the investment that we make in our children and our staff will come back to our... will come back to our community exponentially. Uh, and so I think that that's, you know, getting away from the thought of cost and really understanding it is an investment. All right. School Division receives over half of its funding from Nelson County, which relies, and I wanna say probably 55% of the county budget, um, but we receive, uh, that, which relies heavily on real estate tax for revenue, current tax rates, this lists out what our current tax rates are. I know we have a reassessment, um, and those, those, uh, estimates are coming in, I guess, December sometime soon, so that will also factor in for the county to take a look at. So that will also play into the overall big-picture budget. So this, I, I kind of alluded to this, like, a comprehensive, needs-based budget begins with one guiding principle. We make all of our decisions with the best interest of our students at heart. Our responsibility as educators is, and leaders, is to ensure that all the resources are allocated to provide the best possible learning experiences, support our staff, and sustain meaningful pathways to success. Our budget, a strong budget, is not simply about controlling costs, it is about making strategic investments in the people and the programs that then shape our future. And so every dollar that's spent on instruction, professional development, facilities, student supports, all represents an investment in the growth potential and well-being of our kids and our children. When we view education through the lens of an investment, rather than an expense or a cost, the return is extraordinary. We see well-educated citizens who contribute positively to the local, state, and national economy, and I would even take that further global. You know, we took a question about the, um, the debt, and, and where do we feel like, you know, the expenses for schools play into that, and I would say we contribute to a positive GDP. So we're contributing positively when we have a well-educated citizenry. But another aspect, we talked about our health insurance, and we talked about contributing factors. One of, um, the biggest pharmaceutical expenses that we have, GLP-1s, for weight loss. So for someone like me, that means like, how can we support our staff, our community, in making healthy choices and making the life, a healthier life, because we're seeing those costs? And, and we know that those experiences have other impacts on people's lives, and so we, we take a look at this. And so when we have a, an educated citizenry, we have healthier communities that are decisioned to making civic engagement, becoming involved in our community, and then lower crime rates. So the better we do, we can contribute to the other departments that we have in our county by making their jobs a little bit easier, and greater stability within our society, and a stronger local identity, and that pride. We have, since, in the last few years, we have seen the engagement of our community increase, the engagement of our student bodies increase within the schools, with the activities, and the different, um, the different things they choose to be a part of because of that sense of belonging, but that pride that develops, and the community, um, support that we have had, you see, we had, um, we had our, um, final home football game, senior night, and looking around, the band said, we've not, we're bringing in more money tonight. They had to go send someone to Food Line to buy more food. Um, we had a greater, um, we're bringing in these individuals and our community members to be able to celebrate what our students and our staff are doing. And so by prioritizing and needs-based, we affirm that our education is the foundation of progress. And so supporting our teachers and our staff and our students, and I really think it's important, not just our t- our staff, every one of our employees is critical and vital and valuable, every position, and it's important to make sure that we continue to emphasize that. And that's, our students are the thoughtful and equitable budgeting is not essentially only for academic success, it is essential for the strength and prosperity of our entire community. Investing in our schools is investing in our children, and it is our future, and it is their future. And so I really feel like it's important to kind of keep that in mind, that we, we don't deal with widgets, we deal with children. Widgets cost. Children are an investment, and it's ongoing, it's for the rest of their life, and then we hope that reciprocating component of it. Thank you. Any questions?
Good. I know, right? Appreciate the work you put into that, I really do, it's just hard, it's, um, such a critical part of what this board does, you know, uh, and our job as the school board is to, uh, you know, do the advocacy that we need to do to get the, to get the budget of need, you know, uh, out there and funded. So, um, I appreciate your work on that, I know it was not easy. And it's really important for all of us as humans to understand as much as we can of that, because then we, as not, you know, not necessarily people on the board can advocate for those things as well, you know, in the community, teachers, you know, people of the community should be advocating for this as well, well, I hope that they would want to, so. So the next section is comments from board members. Mr. Cheep, would you like to go first?
Sure. Thank you. So, welcome, everyone. First of all, um, thank you and congratulations to the Rockfish River Elementary School SCA students. That's a really big deal to get up in front of people and stand there while they're watching you and speak, especially for something as important as Veterans Day. That's, that's a fantastic job, and they all seem to be even, even shy, they seem to be very excited about what had happened, and I'm sure they were excited in the moment, too, so that's fantastic. And I'd seen, there's been some videos of, of the, uh, assembly, which I thought-
Mr. Cargill and his team streamed it?
Yeah.
You can go on the YouTube channel and see that.
Yeah, okay, very good. I've, I've watched it, I just didn't know that's how that happened, so that's, that's great, uh, because I couldn't be there. And I wanna thank all the veterans, um, in recognition of, of Veterans Day, you can't thank veterans enough for what they've done to protect our freedoms and our way of life, um, and it's been going on for centuries, um, and, and it is, uh, they'll never get paid enough or be recognized enough for what they do. Also, um, happy birthday to the United States Marine Corps, Semper Five, and thank you to all the Devil Dogs out there. So that's a, a big milestone, I mean, most of our armed services are celebrating 250, um, and so it's the Marine Corps' turn, and that's, that's fantastic, so. Also, congratulations to our new, newly-elected school board members, Ms. Stacy Rush, Mr. Joe Richardson, and Mr. Joe Kennedy. Thank you all for stepping up and raising your hand and saying you wanna do this in a competitive process. As some of you know, uh, at the last minute, I decided to run as a write-in against Mr. Kennedy, um, and we had a bunch of discussion about that, which was very productive and good discussion. We stood shoulder to shoulder and, and had a lot of discussion all day on Election Day. Um, I never intended to run again, um, the whole reason Mr. Kennedy, uh, was on the ballot, uh, he wound up being unopposed until I ran as a write-in, but the whole reason he was on the ballot, uh, in the first place, as we discussed, was, uh, because I elected not to run, I'd been pretty upfront about this was gonna be my last term. So December 31st will wrap me up after seven years of service, but, um, but congratulations to you all, thank you, uh, to Mr. Kennedy for, uh, uh, we worked really well together, it was very professional all day on Election Day, we were together from 6 o'clock in the morning till a little after 7:00 in the evening, got to know each other pretty well, and I think, um, I think Mr. Kennedy's gonna do a fine job on the board, so, uh, thank you all, uh, for that. So, I, I just, real quick, I wanna say a couple of things about, about being on the board, um, as I wrap up seven years of being on it. When I first got on the board, when I, uh, I got on the board differently than what you all have, there was an opening, the East District member at the time, um, had actually ironically run, I believe, as a write-in, uh, because, uh, she didn't, she was looking to go back into private life, she had her life going on, and nobody was gonna run, like, nobody. It was just gonna be an open seat, and so she, she ran and said, okay, I'll do it again, and I think she did for a year, and then she's like, okay, I'm done, I got, you know, we all have stuff, and that's where I'm at, I've got stuff I've gotta do, different part of my life, I've got grandchildren now and things like that. Um, so, they were, the, the process that the board at the time decided to do, you have to appoint someone, right? So they said, well, we know what we're gonna do, we're gonna do a competitive process. There were five of us that sat at a board meeting and answered questions from each one of the sitting, four sitting board members at the time. It was grueling, uh, to say the least, and for whatever reason, the four sitting board members decided to pick me, and so here I am. They've been stuck with me ever since. But, uh, and then I had to run, uh, to finish the term, uh, on the next Election Day, and so I did, and, and so then I ran again and, and got reelected. However, when I started on the board, I had all these ideas about what this was gonna be like, and what I was gonna do, and the things that I was gonna do to change everything. Um, and I'm just telling my story, everybody else's story might be different, but, um, I really thought we could save money, I really thought, um, we could cut costs. I used to say things out loud to people, like, you know, if we could just turn a budget in one time that didn't have an increase on it, that would be fantastic, and some of you might, you probably remember me saying those things. But I learned, I learned a lot, and, and you have to learn, because you don't know what you don't know, as the late Donald Rumsfeld used to say, um, and we don't, you don't know until you're in it, right? I didn't know what an SOQ was, I had no idea. I didn't understand, I looked at the budget, and I didn't understand it when I looked at it, because that's how it's built, not, not by our people, that's just how it's built at the state and federal level, that's just how it is. And so it takes a while to learn how those things work. For whatever reason, I guess because, um, I've been around a long time in the county, and I have a big mouth, I seem to be the historian at times of the board. But one of the reasons that our budget is the way it is, um, and, and true enough, Dr. Hester said that, um, 80%, over 80% of our budget, uh, is, is employee salaries and benefits. That's not uncommon, that's not common to, just, uh, it's not singular to education. That is true for nearly every single business that is in the economy, private or public, it doesn't matter, it's all the same. Your people are your biggest investment, and they are gonna cost the most money if you wanna look at it that way on a budget. And that's just how it is. We have to compete with the market that we're in to compete for the best teachers and staff that we can get. We are competing with Charlotte, the market in Charlottesville and Almory County, okay? Because we compete with them, and they're our next-door neighbors to the north, Amherst and other counties to our south, and, and other counties to our east, try to compete with us, um, somewhat. They, not, not quite as much, they don't pay as well as we do, neither does Campbell and, and other places. But if we don't, um, offer the salary and benefits packages that we offer, we will definitely lose very talented individuals, um, to better situations, um, as far as salary and benefits, um, in other locales, namely Almory and Charlottesville. So we've done a really good job. Uh, we did find out our LCI was 25th in the state, um, I think I said, well, that we should be paying 20, you know, 25th in the state, and, and we've worked really hard to do that, but I wasn't the first one to do it, somebody else on the board previously, um, when I first got on the board, somebody else had said that before I ever got on the board. Um, and, and it is true, it's something that should happen, we need to continue to reward our people, and, um, and that's, that's gonna be an ongoing struggle to do. But I wanna, I wanna speak a little bit to, you know, when I was talking about, learning about the budget and how it works, I was, I had become hyper-focused on the cost per pupil, not understanding what goes into the cost per pupil. Um, there are a lot of factors that go into that, um, but one of the things that I've always known, um, because I've been around for a long time, I went to Livingston Elementary School, I went to Skyler Elementary School, uh, when I first started, and then we moved to Livingston, I went to Livingston. I went to the old junior high school, I went to Nelson County High School. About five years after I graduated, um, I think in 94, 93 or 94, they really started talking about, uh, closing up the community schools and building two elementary schools. And for those of you that don't, didn't know or don't remember, if you can imagine, um, if your child goes to a school where the classroom size is like 12, and then you're talking about going to, combining those schools, everybody's worried it's gonna be like the big city schools. And that was, that was a concern. We weathered that in 95, they built, uh, Ty River Elementary School. Proud to say I worked for a contractor that worked on that, that was, that was great. And then four years later, we built, um, Rockfish River Elementary School. And at that point, that's when we closed all of our schools, and we had issues with people worried about their kids being bused so far, and all that kinda thing. But one of the things that the county school board and the board supervisors understood then, and it's gone all the way through, is our budget is like it is because we're trying to maintain these small classroom sizes. And that was something that was, um, kind of a handshake gentleman's agreement, um, to, to maintain that. It's not written down anywhere, it's not in a contract, but it's something that, that basically, as a, as a citizenry, we got that promise from our elected officials that, that they would carry that out and try to honor that. And I really thank the board supervisors for continuous, continuing to fund us at the level they are to keep that a reality, right? Because our kids get a better education because they get more individualized instruction, and now more than ever, with the mental health issues we're having, behavioral issues that we have, that smaller classroom size makes it a lot easier to deal with those issues. If you had 25, or 27, or 28 kids in a classroom, it is anybody that's ever taught in a classroom, and I have for at least three years, it, it only takes, you know, you can deal with one child that's having an issue, that's not a problem, you might be able to deal with two, when you get, start talking about three, you're gonna lose your room, right? And the kids that you need to reach, paying attention, you can't reach them because you're dealing with this crisis that's going on. And those are the things that are important, and that's what we hear from teachers, um, all of the time. So I thank the board supervisors for funding us at the rate, uh, that we are, but because our enrollment's declining, I mean, we were at, I don't know, when I was in school, we were at 21, 2200 students in the school system, and now we're below 1,400 now, is that right? Or just below 1,400? Those costs, there's a floor for the costs. I mean, it, it, it costs a certain amount of money to run and staff a building, no matter how few kids are in it, and, and we're rapidly approaching that if we're not already there. So I don't think those costs are gonna go down, um, and most of the, what's gonna happen is, is students that are leaving are usually students that their parents have means to put them somewhere else to, to go to school, a private school setting or something like that, so that means a higher percentage of your students are gonna be in need of services, and those services cost money. We're in a rural area, you just heard Dr. Hester talk about, um, what, what the cost is for, whether it's a residential, uh, school, or whether it's a day school, what those costs are, and, you know, we're gonna do whatever we can, whatever we need to do to meet kids where they are, um, but that costs a lot of money. What I learned along the way, um, and, uh, I really wanna thank some of the staff, or all of the staff, rather, um, I'm sure Dr. Yarzabinsky got tired of hearing me say, you know what we really need to do, is we need to give these personality assessments to these kids in the elementary school, because I was, I've been beating that drum since I was a teacher, I've been beating that drum, and I still believe in it, and thankfully, uh, you know, Dr. Y shares that sentiment, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but that overall, right, and has been working on those, those types of things. It's not exactly like I had it envisioned, but I'm not a trained educator, you know, I'm on the school board, so, um, I, I think it's very important, our job as a school board, no matter what I thought it was in the beginning, our job as a school board is to hire the superintendent to approve the budget and set school board policy. That's it. That's our job, and we've got three jobs, that's all, that's all that we do. Everything else that we do is in support of, right? And we have to be careful that we don't get in the way of while we're supporting as well. But, but I am so proud of the things that, that are going on in the school system right now. It's important to me, um, and I think every, I know everybody on this board, it's important that, um, we meet children where they are, and that, you know, our goal has been, and my personal goal has been, that when children walk across that stage as young adults, and they have a diploma put in their hand, that they have a really good idea of what it is they wanna go do. They don't have to go to college, they don't have to go in the military, they don't have to go to trade school, some people just, they might just wanna go to work. But whatever it is that they wanna do, that we've helped them achieve, whatever that is, and, and get as far towards that goal as they can possibly get, meeting people where they are. So, um, I'll wrap up here in, in just a second, I know it's long, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But, um, I do wanna say, um, the single big, best thing I think we've done in the school system is hiring our superintendent, right?
Yep.
Yeah. We, um, we started a search, um, and our board was, was just like it is now when we started that search, um, I, I think we had, was it two members on the board that hired the previous superintendent, right? Okay. Um, and so, um, we knew what we wanted to see with the next superintendent, um, we knew that right out of the box, okay? We had a lot of interest, um, in the job, but one of the things that we knew, we, we met in, in our search, and we talked about it, and one of the first things we said was, the superintendent needs to live in this county, they need to, they need to be part of the community, because we've had three, the, prior to Dr. Hester, the three most successful, longest-serving superintendents that we've had in this county were Henry Connor, Ernest Worley, and Roger Collins. The thing that all three of them had in common was, they moved to the county, they embedded themselves in the community, they became part of the fabric, and they, they were part of it, they were, they were citizens, and they lived it. So low and behold, in walks Dr. Hester, and I can't give away the form on how the interview went, but I- went, but I will tell you this, we didn't have an opportunity to get that part out before she said, you know, I'm already looking for property or a house to buy because I want to live here. I've had my eye on this job, this is what I want to do. It was a no brainer to hire her. And just to watch her go and put the team together, it's been really good. I mean, you've got a fantastic team, so. Anyhow, that's all I got. And that's enough, I think.
I think so. Good job.
Thank you.
All I got to say is if you come to the December meeting and talk this long about your career, I'm going to stop you.
Is that right? Are you sure?
Yes. I'm going to stop. I just want to thank everyone for attending the meeting as you have tonight. Thank you, George. And if you're going to, this is going to be your last one, thank you for doing what you've done over the years.
Oh, yeah, I'll be here.
Well, I think.
I want me to let her talk, but I'll be here.
I'm done.
I want me to let her talk.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So a couple of quick things just to give acknowledgements to, and George, we're going to recognize you, Margaret and Janet at the next meeting. But the middle school play, Mr. Kirchner, was fantastic. I don't know how those kids can remember all those lines and get all of that done, but you just, you always put such a great play on your kids' do. I think the thirtieth anniversary at Ty River was awesome. It was really great. I don't know if anybody saw the pictures. There were many teachers that were there, that were there in the beginning, some still working for us. So that was a really nice acknowledgement of that school, so thank you guys for doing that. We have a V S B A meeting next week to talk about, one of the things that, you know, we'll talk about later on are the legislative positions. But as we go through the budget, we talk about some things. Just know, I think as a community, as a system, that as a group, the Virginia School Board Association is advocating for things like taking the LCI off, like a better way to figure out the funding for schools. Another legislative thing we'll talk about later is chronic absenteeism. You know, that's been a really hot topic for many people in our community. The reality is, is there's some laws associated with that that we can't touch. But also, it's tied to accreditation, so we as a group, as a board, are going to propose a legislative policy that really pulls that away from part of the accreditation process. So, you know, the things that are frustrations in our community, even with our staff, as a board group, we continue to hear that and just know that there's advocacy that helps beyond our local level that we are working on to change some of those laws and some of those regulations at a higher level. The other thing, we talked about the groups and I'm not going to touch your stuff, Isaiah, because I know you've got the group cover, but I do want to acknowledge that it's been really great to see the sportsmanship stuff with our kids. Incredible. It sounds like there was something tied with the athletics game where you all, Dreckentalk gave you all some shout outs on just the sportsmanship there. I loved seeing our cheerleaders, you all go to the cheer competition. I loved seeing the football team and the cheerleaders go to the band competition. You know, that's what it's about. Winning is important, right? Like we all want to win. But how you win and how you play the game is even more important. You guys are killing it.
And I just want to echo what my fellow board members said. Thanks to the veterans, congratulations to the new school board members. I'm not going to give my spiel. I may never give it. It may just be something I just never say. But I did want to let you know that in our meeting next week, I have to do, or I am on the nominating committee for the V S B A Central Regional Committee? Is it a committee? I don't know. Anyway, it's a group. And so the V S B A divides itself up into regions. We're in the central region and it's quite large. And I was on the nominating committee to determine who was going to be the chair and the vice chair. So, you know, as school board members, we do have opportunities to work in other capacities within V S B A and within the region and within the state. And, you know, our advocacy and our connections with the people that do the same job for us in other localities is another part of, you know, what we do and how we can connect and learn our jobs and make our impact actually kind of echo out to other localities. So, I mean, I was only the nominating chair or the nominating person, so, but I did get to meet a bunch of people that way as our work on other committees and boards too happens all the time. So, and I also wanted to do one more thing, this is kind of like not even related to it, but it's kind of related to it. In the board of supervisors meeting today, there was a presentation from the Blue Ridge Health District about their study, which they do, I think, every three to five years. I don't know exactly which one it is, but it's called Map to Health. And it's a big, thick, like eighty-page thing about the health of the region. And so much of that, and they did it specific to Nelson as a presentation in the meeting, so much of that relates to, you know, the health affects the school, housing, education, health outcomes. I mean, all of that stuff is so related. If you guys have any, anybody has any kind of interest in that sort of thing, it's just, it's very telling, very telling. And they did some very deep interviews with like over a hundred people in the remote areas, what they said. It's like ringina and part of shipment, I think. And it was like a remote area of Nelson, so. I always thought of Tyro as being the most remote, or maybe Gladstone, but anyway. Remote being kind of like far away. Okay, all right. So important dates, we are, at least two of us are going to the school board convention next week. So we'll be gone Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I think the, Dr. Hester will be out there longer. We do have Thanksgiving in two weeks. Yeah, 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 crazy. And then, I guess, right on the tail of that is winter break and the end of the grading period and all those sorts of things. So I'm not going past December with my important dates because I don't have to. Yes, however.
For everyone else. Once the week of Thanksgiving comes, it quickly goes by. Because once we come out of Thanksgiving, then it's three weeks and then we're at winter break. And then your first semester is over and then you come back and then it's the whirlwind of then getting into, I mean, whatever the winter has for us in early spring. But then we're getting into the SOL seasons, you know, the high school already is going to have the SOLs coming into December. And then in the other areas, it just goes by quickly. And, you know, I think sometimes like if I can just get to Thanksgiving or if I can, and like there's a lot to be done between now and Thanksgiving and to thrive instead of survive. But that sometimes are those little markers to work towards, so. We do put some of the other important things just to kind of keep that in the back of everybody's minds. But we do also try to have winter break be just that, it's a break.
All right, so comments from the superintendent?
Do you want to go?
You want to do Isaiah first?
I think Isaiah wants to go.
I love hearing Isaiah first, if that's all right with everybody else.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say thank you all for everything, especially as our fall scores come to an end. Thank you all for so much support you all showing us. It's been truly amazing to see how many people show up at football games, volleyball games, or anything else. It's just been an absolute pleasure to see how many people show up there. And as our winter sports begin to kick up, I know basketball starts next week, so already jumping into that. So, yeah, I just want to say thank you all for everything. And hopefully tomorrow night, we'll continue our football season and, yeah, thank you.
This is a regional game that you're going to. Right? Congratulations for making that.
Thank you.
Want to go to Glenver?
Mm-hmm.
Glenver, sorry. Glenver, Glenver. Good luck. You guys have done an amazing job.
Yeah, yeah. And we also probably should mention that the one-act play won for the sub-region, right? So they're going on to the regionals as well?
To the region at Radford High School on Saturday.
Okay, awesome. Awesome. Hope they come back and do that again here for us so we can see it.
I think they're putting on something tomorrow, but is it during the day or?
During the day, but she usually does like a...
On Sunday or something like that?
She usually do like a, at the end of the day.
Do what?
I mean, we've just been like in hours.
Oh, yeah, okay. I was like, where'd that?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty tomorrow morning?
Ah.
There you go. Over to the high school.
Three minutes?
Not the practice.
Okay, now you.
Now me? Okay. All right, see if I don't need to take that up with me. Okay.
He said, she said, now you.
Now me, now me. All right, so we sent a communication out to all of our staff and all of our community about the approved cut scores and that the Board of Education was going to vote on the implementation process for those cut scores. For those of you who are not really clear on what I'm talking about, for years, there's been an established cut score, four hundred is passing, and then they've kind of identified other bands as maybe being in need. Recently, the Board of Education has established new cut scores, which has drastically increased. I think we all agree that high expectations are really important to encourage the strong performance and rigor that we can provide, but there's also a reasonable way of doing that. And so today, the Board of Education voted on having a four-year implementation process as a phase-in way of putting in these increased cut scores. This year will be a planning year, so those cut scores won't go into effect this year. They will go into incrementally next year. We had advocated by having a hold harmless effect, and that reminded me, we talked about the LCI, so someone remind me about that later on when we talk about the impact of LCI, where there was a lacking of hold harmless. So why is that important to try to exclude the current high school students? It's because those drastic changes to the SOL will impact potential graduation. Unlike three through eighth, you don't have to pass the SOL in order to have, to maybe be promoted up to the next grade. It is a big key indicator whether you're prepared for the next grade, but it is not a mandatory. In high school, you have to pass a certain amount of SOLs. You can't opt out unless you don't want to graduate. So there is a concern that these drastic increases to the test scores will impact students in their graduation. Currently, this year's senior class will not be impacted. Next year, the board did not vote to address that aspect, so that will be part of the conversations that we will continue to have with the Board of Education and potentially a new incoming state superintendent. We know that a part of these new cut scores is something called approaching, like approaching passing. That will count as a passing grade until the full implementation of the process. So we do know that the conclusion of this integration is 2028, 2029. Students retaking an SOL exam will retake it at the cut score that when they initially took it. So that's good. So if I took an SOL this year and fail it and then have to take it again next year, it's this year's scores that they'll have to get. So that is really, really good. Students that have already demonstrated proficiency in a high school course won't have to retake it to get that score again. Once you've passed it, you've passed it, they don't make you redo it. There will be a release of revised student assessment reports in the spring of 2026 for parents and school divisions to clearly communicate new proficiency levels. We are asking and requesting communication tools to come from the state to aid us in being able to really clearly explain this to our staff, to our students, to our families. This is not a small adjustment. So I did want to be able to shed some light on that. We did encourage individuals to take a survey to be able to provide their feedback on these scores. So transitioning a little bit away from that, Fine Arts has had a bang-up month. We talked about it, the Something Rotten Junior was fantastic, our one-act play. Thankfully, I had someone warn me that like, hey, it's a little bit of a heavier subject, so just be prepared when you watch it. But it's really meaningful and impactful, so I encourage you, if you can go out to Radford High School and support them Saturday, please do. I wish them, what is it, Break a Leg? Now, football goes and plays Friday night. I'm going to say good luck to them. I don't want to cross my wires on that. They will take on Glenver Friday night. So we had several student athletes make it to the state level. We had two cross-country runners make it to the state level. So again, we have a lot to be proud of in our student athletes and our students in general in a various array of activities and events. Held our senior night, that was, it's a special night. I talked to a parent who just, they appreciate the effort and the work that goes into putting on events like that because that is a symbolic and a significant experience for both the students and the parents. And so that was really nice to watch and be a part of. And as we said, we're coming up on Thanksgiving break. I encourage all of our community members, if you want to stay up to date with some things, find us on Facebook and follow us. It's a great way to get some information and really to be able to see and experience some of the great things that are taking place. I always say that the biggest engagement that we get is when they get to see their students and they get to see the staff. It just explodes. And so I really encourage anybody to kind of take a look at our websites and follow us on Facebook and really stay connected with us that way. One of the things we talk about is our advocacy. I currently serve as a legislative representative for the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, and that gives us an opportunity to be in front of individuals, to advocate not only for legislation, but just the overall thought process of what we do. And I'm hoping to really use this as a platform to be able to advocate not only just for Nelson, but for education and K through twelve, public education, and really just quite frankly, overall education for any child. In the end, they're all our children and we want what's best for them in any way, shape or form it can come in, and we just want to be able to support that. And I would say, as we listen to the pre-budget feedback, if we have any, I don't think we had anybody signed up just yet, but as we listen to that, now more than ever, it is critical that we support and retain our talented educators in our public schools. The work of our educators is foundational to the success of our students and ultimately the strength of our community, our state and our nation. Teachers do far more than deliver instruction, they nurture curiosity, they build confidence and develop the critical thinking skills necessary for students to thrive in life, the workforce and citizenship. We know that a well-educated population contributes to a stronger economy, healthier communities and lower crime. And also individuals that are empowered to make and have the confidence to make decisions and informed, positive decisions. The daily work of our teachers and all educators creates those long-term outcomes. And the impact of a great teacher resonates far beyond the classroom and well into the future. I think sometimes our staff, and when we say educators, our custodians are educators. They have some of the closest relationships with some of our students who are most desperate for those connections to trusted adults, our cafeteria workers, our front office, our instructional aides, our maintenance workers, our bus, everybody. So I don't want to just be specific with teachers, but we are reaching those areas where we need to understand their roles. And because of this, it's imperative that we continue to invest in our schools and in our employees. The investment is at its core, an investment in our children and return it exponentially. Every student who feels seen, supported and challenged in the future is a future adult who will shape the world that we share with them. And at times, there is noise that can distract us from our purpose. It is important that we remain focused on what matters and that's providing the best possible pathway to success for every one of our students. And when we champion our teachers and support the work happening in our classrooms each day, we're really investing in championing our children and our community. And thank you for your continued commitment to our students, our staff and our public education. We appreciate it. And so with that, I get to show off all the different things that we are doing from a division level. And so when we talk about, you know, did we lose that? Did I lose that chance? I did lose that chance. So when we talk about the different things that are taking place, we're entering into our budget season. And so we have participated in conferences where we got a Virginia budget outlook. And quite frankly, for the state, it is looking like somewhat positive outlook. Now, how does that shake out in terms of how it gets down to us? We still are waiting to see. There's been a great deal of conversations and meetings with the Head Start groups. It is quite an undertaking. Just being brutally honest, it is a pretty significant undertaking. You'll hear later some proposals that we have for, we will probably, using the funds that we're getting from the Head Start, need to hire someone to be able to maintain all the different regulations and items that are related to just running Head Start. This is in even our K through twelve aspect. So it'll be very, very interesting to see how these future meetings. Participation in our community in terms of the Livingston Halloween event, Mr. Ashley and Ms. Irvin were so gracious of their time and being able to come out and hand out and Ms. Irvin were so gracious of their time and being able to come out and hand out, we were able to hand out books and puzzles and educational aspects, but also candy, that's what they came out for. And so it was a lot of fun to be able to participate in that. As we talked about, Ty River's 30th anniversary, that was a great deal of fun, and Ms. Irvin was here when it, it was established and opened up, and she was able to take a picture with Ms. Wells, who was an original, and, I mean, original more than one ways, but she's an original, and Ms. Shepherd, and so that was really nice to be able to see. And then working with our health insurance to be able to start getting an idea of what to anticipate. Instruction, it's been super busy. You know, the collaboration that we have with our instructional teams and our leadership and our teachers is really, is really shaping. And being able to work together and create that, that concept of it's all of us together. So the instructional team facilitating professional development, being able to support our staff, walkthroughs, to be able to see what's taking place. I know we have three incoming school board members, and I invite our two remaining along, maybe doing some two-by-two walkthroughs and observations in our, so you really see what's taking place in our buildings. Because I think if you, if you can't really see it, you really don't understand it. And so we invite to be able to set that up in the coming, you know, once we are able to install everyone and get going. We're in the process of developing school calendar, appreciate everybody provided feedback. Corporating and creating partnerships with our community members, Woodsons Mills, being able to have some educational opportunities through Rockfish Valley Foundation and our Nature Foundation, on being able to partner with them to create those experiences for our kids. Really working to submit a letter to Region Nine for the Go Virginia Grant Mobile Unit, really looking to kind of advance our partnership for Cyber Bites Foundation. So really expanding in all areas and pathways that we can to give all of our students a pathway that, that interests them. We continue to complete the submit Summit K-12 Early Literacy Training with our ESOL teams. There's, there's a lot going on. Mr. Belaka will talk a little bit more about the VTSS grant that we received this year and the investment and the focus that we really put into employing the, the tenants and the components of VTSS with our students and our staff. We, we did finally complete the installation of her vowels tracker, little bumpy, little bumpy at first, didn't go quite as smooth, but we do find it to be important as we work through it. Pupil personnel, thank you to Ms. Roydinger and your team. The, the feet meet that we held here, it was our first, our inaugural feet meet, really emphasizing the inclusivity of our, our special education students and our Gen Ed students, and just giving them the same opportunities or similar opportunities that we would. And the outpouring, Mr. Walker, your staff, and in our middle school staff, these students had an opportunity to be welcomed as they walked into the middle, of the high school by rows and rows of our high school students and our staff cheering them on and really making them feel special. And it was, it was a wonderful experience to be able to, and I know I've had the questions, are we gonna do it again? And we'd like to. Maybe not when it's that cool in the morning, but whatever, it ended up being a beautiful day. So also participation in V case, and so it's, one of our goals in our strategic plan is to talk about growth and the professional growth of all of our individuals and being able to, to continue to move forward with that. Our early childhood special education team hosted developmental screenings. That is our community, our school-aged children in our community where parents want to be able to, to provide some screening opportunities for their children if they have some concerns in certain areas. So as we try to reach out, like I mentioned, they're all our kids. It's important to be able to support them. We had a team of general and special education attend the Virginia Council of Administrators, that's V cases I was talking about, and really to focus on specially-designed instruction as we move forward, not only with our sped teachers to really focus on specially-designed instruction, but really kind of gaining that knowledge for all of our educators to understand what it is. There's a lot of components of special education that benefit all of our students, and so I think it's important that we continue to provide that educational experience for our staff. NCPS was awarded grant funding for its school-based telehealth, Ms. Roydinger will provide a little bit more information about that. So we're pretty excited about that, and they continue their help desk. Human resources, I don't know if you guys saw the post, and thank you, Ms. Choate, for putting the post of announcing our newly hired assistant principal at the high school, Ms. Knight. It, it almost broke our Facebook page. We got farm, we got a ton of engagement aspects to that. And so that's, that's, that shows you all the different efforts and attempts that we have, not only to celebrate, that also we're trying to use these things to recruit. You know, that sometimes that's one of the ways we are able to advertise vacancies and then celebrate our hires, so they know that, that they are in a place that is excited and welcoming to them. There's also been a great deal of effort on early childhood provisionally licensed teacher incentive program. Ms. Choate put in for a grant to be able to support our early childhood teachers to be able to continue their education and have that paid for. And that is huge in that, in that area, that is huge to be able to, to provide that. And then early childhood Virginia preschool initiatives reporting requirements coming up. Technology, actually, that's Mr. Beeler, you see one of our One Nelson Award winners up on a, on a ladder fixing some of the cameras. We have the installation of a lot of these replacements and a lot of work that we have on being able to bolster our security that we have in our, in all of our buildings, that's, it looks like that's at the high school. But we had an upgrade project, so working with our, our company, OptTech. We continue to do camera repairs. Virginia CyberCon, it was a conference that was held, put on kind of locally by some local tech individuals, but it was a phenomenal conference, really highlighting and emphasizing the importance of ongoing cybersecurity supports and the different things that take place with that. So we appreciate the attention being paid by our technology team. Hardware-software requirement positions, working with building administrators to gain input, working with schools to capture events. Mr. Cargill is, is putting in a great effort to be able to capture Nelson in the fall. That's just a picture, and I mean, anybody who's around here knows just how beautiful it is. So really kind of taking a look at each of our, our sites and our buildings for that, and also putting a lot of time into streaming events. You know, we talk about the engagement with our community, and we are trying to put out efforts, so if you can't be here physically, you will be able to enjoy and be a part of the experience and see the great performances of our students, or just those, you know, kind of instrumental marking experiences, whether it's a promotion ceremony, or it's a performance or what have you. So a lot of effort goes into putting those on, but it's so we can support our community better. And, and there's a survey of like, hey, you know, can we stream something for you? And so a lot of those, as you see the pie chart right there, of what those requests are for. Maintenance, super busy, continue to have assembled a transportation building so they can store supplies. We got our yearly haul of paper delivered, and so that takes some space. Taking a look at the, taking advantage of our asynchronous day where we didn't have students to make some of those repairs that we need to do, that you don't want the students in there, we're trying to prepare and get ready for the winter months. Meeting with contractors to get budget pricing for the mobile unit over at Ty River to be removed. Had the fire marshal, everybody's favorite experience, the fire marshal coming through for the inspection on early November, and intended a, a school construction assistant program, grant award program webinar. And so again, we keep talking about, we, we really try hard to find alternative funding opportunities. We talk about the per pupil expenditure, the part that people forget to think about is that's not just from our local, that's not funds just from our local budget, that includes grants. So when we go out to try to get other money to, to help out, that gets added into our per pupil expenditure, and I think sometimes people don't really realize that. Transportation and safety, really appreciate it. You know, we talked about Ms. Bell, who is one of the first to participate in the themes. Our transportation department is also, and our, and our, they all are. Our school nutrition, our transportation love to participate in these things. So they set up a bus at the, the One Nelson trunk-or-treat that took place. We had a incredible turnout for that. We had a ton of our community there, it's a safe way to enjoy trunk-or-treating, and it's open to all of our community. You don't have to be a student with us, it's open to everyone, so, and they came out, and they enjoyed it. They have been busy, they, we've really kicked into the remediation, so transportation is used to provide for our students in the after-school remediation programs. They attended the Association of People Transportation. Mr. Ashley's been elected as president of District Five, so that's exciting. Also, they, they, Mr. Ashley helped out with the book box, formerly, we used to have a book bus, no longer, so we have some things going on. School nutrition, October has been a very busy month for school nutrition, celebrated Farm-to-School Week, October 6th to the 10th, cafeterias decorated for fall and farming. Rockfish and Ty River participated in Crunch Herd Round the Commonwealth, which is always a lot of fun. The 13th through the 17th is National School Lunch Week, the theme was Taste of the World, Taste the World, Your School Lunch Passport. Students got to enjoy these tasty, different tasty meals. The 13th and 20th, the full-time nutrition employees worked at the school sites preparing the meals and decorating cafeteria lines. We'll continue to work with Virginia Foods for Virginia Kids Cohort in conjunction with Chef Anne Foundation to increase scratch or semi-scratch menu items. I know that that is something that we, you all have talked about quite frequently, is trying to make sure that we purchase local as much as we can and try to provide the scratch or semi-scratch as, as much as we can. So I appreciate their efforts and take a look at those taking advantage of our community eligibility provision, our CEP, where every student who goes through the line gets a free breakfast, a free lunch. Student breakfast meals on site, fourteen thousand eight hundred and six, or lunches. So this is an increase, I want to say by maybe seven hundred from the previous month, and then lunches jumped up, twenty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven. And the, the suppers, I think last time it was ten, because we just hadn't gotten going with the after-school programs. Now you see that they are really taking advantage of that. Community engagement, we had a lot going on this past month. The picture up in the upper left is what I was talking about, our sped kids, when they came in to compete, they walk through that tunnel of, of support, really. So we had the feet meet, we had the one-act play. Congratulations to Nelson County High School for its level of distinction in the accreditation model. Our three other schools are on track and, and performing well. So we are doing really well and trending in the right direction. 30th anniversary that saw a good turnout for our community of Ty River Elementary, the family partnerships that we have. We celebrated our Parks and Rec participants at a football game, so that's what you see in the middle picture, just bringing out our community members. Trunk-or-treat, our Veterans Day Assembly, Something Rotten, our senior night. We were also particularly driven through the, when we had the shutdown, it's just the need of our local community in terms of the feud and, the food insecurity. So still continuing to run a food drive to provide, the boxes are at each of our school sites, to provide some food and support to our local families. And we also, in this last month, had the Student Success Night, where formerly known as parent-teacher conferences. It was also School Counseling Week, November 3rd through the 7th, so we want to say thank you so much to Chrissy Tiora and Nancy Cornell for all the work that they do with our students. Chrissy is our full-time school psychologist and is really embedded in working closely with our students. And Nancy Cornell, there's a lot of the assistance, particularly with testing and evaluations and things of that nature, so we appreciate their work. And of course, thank you to our veterans. The, the selfless willingness to serve and do what's necessary, we will always be thankful for. Thank you.
How much you can do in a month? Can I, do you think we should do public comments before the budget, or? I have to open it and then close it if we are gonna, if there, nobody's signed up for the pre-budget public hearing, but?
I think, I think you still need to.
Do that.
I think, you know, you might as well do it first, because no one signed up, but that doesn't mean someone sitting here doesn't want to say something, so we want to make sure that we offer that, but then we can close it and then do the public.
Go ahead and open the pre-public budget hearing, if anybody wants to speak toward their priorities that, you know, you want the board and the staff to hear. Now is your time. Hearing done. All right, I'm gonna close the pre-public, or the pre-budget public hearing. That was quick. But I would like to encourage you guys, if you have something that you, you are thinking about that should be a priority, to, you know, email it in or, you know, somehow get it to us. Yes, our, we're open for that. Okay, and now it's just comments from the public. Just want to kind of remind everybody to, to, it's basically three, you have three minutes. If you're, we're speaking on behalf of a group, you can have five minutes, we're gonna keep you to that as much as we can, I think you'll time them. And just speak to something that, it says, for an issue that's not on the agenda, the school board will hear a citizen under the agenda's public comments. For an issue that's on the agenda, anyway, members of the public who wish to adjust the board or ask to sign up, tell us your name and your address, keep it to three minutes, and, you know, obviously be as gentle as you can. So first person on the list is Philip Kirschner.
Hi, Philip Kirschner. I live in Lynn, but I'm a staff member. Of course, teacher at both the middle school and the high school, and the vice president of the Nelson County Education Association. As we begin the budget planning season, I want to thank the current school board members for their advocacy for students and staff and Nelson County Public Schools. You have served before, during, and after the worst pandemic our country has seen in a century, where every day was uncharted territory. Looking around at our neighboring districts, it's easy to take for granted the unity that you have expressed in your policymaking and the budgetary process. In a time where politics has divided families, friends, and neighbors, it's refreshing to see this board, whose members all have very different political beliefs, come together for the purpose of supporting our school. Although each of you have varying stances on a number of issues, you are united in making Nelson County Public Schools as successful as it can be. Thank you. I know this consensus building did not come easy, it must have taken a tremendous amount of work to build the trust and knowledge necessary to provide unified leadership to staff and students. It is easier for students to learn and for teachers to teach when it feels like everyone, especially our school board, is pulling in the same direction. Thank you again for your service to the community, you have served as role models not only to the others, to other school boards, but to our students, showing them how adults can find agreement, address concerns, and move forward in a positive direction despite our differences. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person is Denise Moldenauer.
Hi, Denise Moldenauer. I live on Walkaround Lane in Roseland, and I'm here to discuss the attendance policy and a new policy by the school that results in lunch detention. It's sort of separate, I know the attendance policy is based on the governor's mandate. But first, I want to say, I know this is a very difficult job for the administration, and my, Mr. Kirschner, my children have him and adore him. It's still the best math teacher I've heard, according to my daughter, and Mr. Walker has backed me and my daughter on a couple of sports issues, so I'm appreciative of everybody's work, but I do want to give a little example of how this policy affects the family directly. So I know the current governor is really concerned about attendance policy, and currently, as parents, we're getting notes if our children miss seven days, and we're told that they need to do seat remediation. I talked to Mrs. Point Dexter, and technically, you don't have to do the seat remediation until 14 days, but we're getting these letters saying that that's seven days. So I'll give you an example of what that looks like. One of my daughters went, took her out of school for three days to go look at a college in Colorado, and we had a note for that from me. Then she went to see a doctor one day, she had a dentist appointment, and she was sick twice, so here we are at day seven. This week, she's missed three days of school, to a point she had a hundred and one degree fever. So in theory, she should have to stay out after school for three hours for those three days, so nine hours in a seat. The governor wants you to be given instructional time to mitigate the time you missed from class. That's not really happening, you're sitting in a seat. So it feels as though it's punitive, because really it is. And it feels like, almost like after-school suspension. So I, I think as a community, we could come up with a more compassionate way when our kids are sick or needing a school. I also feel like as a parent, I should be able to keep my home, my daughter home when she's sick. So now we've reached seven days, I have to, in theory, have a note for these three days she's missed to be excused. Well, my pediatrician is forty-five minutes away, it will cost me gas there and back, also time off work, and to pay the doctor. That's really cost prohibitive for most people in the county, and it seems rather unfair. So I want to bring that to attention. Another thing that's happening is, aside from actual missing class, now if you miss, if you, okay, fifteen seconds, quickly, seven tardies, and you have to have, this is really what I wanted to talk about, you have to have lunch detention. That is so unfortunate, right? So my other daughter has missed two days for dermatology appointments, I made it eight AM, eight AM, so unfortunately, this is driver's class. I made it 8:00 AM to unfortunately miss Miss Driver's class. So she wouldn't miss Miss Bell's class because it's easier to miss advanced trauma than it is trigonometry. But she missed in the morning, and then she missed another doctor's appointment. She was sick two mornings, couldn't make it the first period, but didn't want to miss trigonometry in the evening. Anyway, she was supposed to have lunch detention for this. This seems really punitive, and I think we could do better job of it.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else have any... Yeah, I will. You can also write it all down. We'll be happy to listen to it. Anybody? Nobody else? Okay, we're good. All right. So next is we're gonna have, and if you don't want to stay for the rest of this, you do not have to stay, except for some people need to stay, right? But other people who don't need to stay, don't need to stay, but you're all welcome to stay. We have, that's mine. We're moving into the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions? No?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I have an aye too, so. Now we're in for items for information. The very first one is the first reading of October 9th meeting's minutes. If you have any questions or corrections, you would let our clerk know. And what do you see?
This name.
Oh, right. All right, well, I was thinking Tammy, but she's just, okay. So let our superintendent know. She's multitasking. Now we have Mr. Les Campbell, update on capital improvements.
Please come on paper.
All right. So I guess I will give you some updates on the renovation process. So I included the maps again to, for quick reference, as I, we've broken it down into sections. So today, we had our progress meeting. In the progress meeting, we had our commissioning kickoff meeting today. So we're at the stage where some of the equipment's going in is actually going to be, start to get commissioned into service. And that's tentatively started, is supposed to start the week of the 24th. We're using facilities dynamics for that process. MB is planning to finish up renovations in areas D1 through D4 on the map, actually tomorrow night. They will then move to C1 and C2, which is further up the hallway towards their library, if you're familiar with the areas. They, so D1 through D4, they actually was a week behind on schedule. It's not, it doesn't affect their overall schedule, it's just they were just behind on that one area. MB is actually planning to move to C1 and C2 areas Monday night. Kevin was able to work with, with the contractors to select the next set of rooms to renovate. And I included some pictures of the renovation process, the ceiling, and it's actually been, it's been actually installed on the lower end of the math hallway, the west wing. They finished that ceiling up. And MB has actually been working with their local building inspection office and the fire marshal come in about a month and a half ago, and they was, he was in, actually inspecting the new fire dampers that were put in. And as it turns out, that it's only really a handful that actually are installed in firewalls. And so he was concerned about the annular space around the fire damper. And there's a minimum of a half an inch gap that's allowed to go around, and what happens is the framing, if there was a fire, it allows it to, if there's any kind of swelling or anything in the framing, there's nothing to obstruct the damper from operating like it's supposed to. So there was some concerns from the fire marshal, and MB has worked through those and getting, and addressing those issues. The DOAS unit, the Dedicated Outdoor Air System, they're working on finishing, insulating the duckwork and all going into the building there. We have a total of three of those units altogether, two of which were installed on the roof, on the lower end of the west wing, and then one's going on the ground, on the backside of the school, next to the propane tanks on the backside. They, they're working on, one and two now, three will be installed, commissioned later on. MB is actually moving upstairs to start removing the ceilings up in the second floor of the high school tonight, actually. Sorry, that was delayed. So they actually start tonight. It was supposed to start on the 10th, and they start tonight removing the ceilings. The brick remediation, they've actually stopped because of the cold weather coming in. They'll pick back up all that in the springtime. And the four shop units were replaced, and they were actually started up and they're running now and operating. So they will be commissioned in the process later on this year too, in December. And that's, sounds short, but it's a lot going on, so. Any questions?
Have we, for the commissioning, are they using...
A separate commissioning agent to do that?
We've employed a separate...
We have, right. I thought we had, I just wanted to verify. Couldn't remember?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr., oh, sorry, excuse me, Dr. Yarzadinsky is next with an update on...
A brief enrollment update. The data that I will share to you today comes via the Fall Student Record Collection in comparison to last year's Fall Student Record Collection. Our most recent SRC was approved and finalized late October. And from this report, we get two enrollment counts, full-time and funded enrollment. So first off, full-time enrollment. And this is what we would call Students in Seats. And this is going to be comprised of all students in each of our four schools, in addition to students who are in special ed and private day placements, students placed at alternative schools, and our pre-K population. I will say, it is not completely comprehensive, as it does not include students who receive ISPs, students who come in for drop-in services like speech or physical therapy, or occupational therapy, sorry. Does not include two- to four-year-olds in the home or private setting who are undergoing evaluation, nor does it include NPAs or our Head Start students. Each of those still require staffing and personnel implications for us, but again, they're not included in our enrollment numbers. So our full-time fall funded, I'm sorry, funded enrollment, not funded, full-time enrollment is 1,440.5 students, with a little pie chart right there that shows the demographic breakdown. I would say the biggest point of interest is that our Hispanic population has exceeded the Black population as the second-largest demographic subgroup. And that just recently happened over the last two years. And this chart depicts division membership variance in both demographic subgroups and students with disabilities, where we would see just an overall small decrease of 3.5%. Where we would see a little bit larger demographic subgroup decrease in the Black population, almost 12%, and we're pretty much flat everywhere else. Small decrease in English-language learners, but it's still rather large relative to what we've seen pre-COVID times and even in the years running up to 2023. This chart, like, included this so we could see how this enrollment is distributed across the grade levels by cohort size. And this is actually very telling and can foretell some of our future enrollment trends. You'll notice that our largest cohorts are all housed at the high school. The first, second, third, and fifth largest cohorts are all grades nine through 12. And as they graduate out, unless they are replaced by equivalent or larger cohorts, we will be seeing a reduction in overall enrollment. And we can see that our, next one. Again, and just breaking down our 25 enrollment versus 24 enrollment. 1,492 was reduced to 1,420.5, a change of 51 and a half fewer students. And this change can be contributed to three main variables. A large, relatively large cohort graduating, 2025, was about 15 students higher than our current juniors and seniors right now. We have a very small kindergarten cohort, which is actually the smallest cohort out of all of our grade levels. And we recorded 62 withdrawals spanning from June 1st through October 1st. And we want to track these from the last day of school, so students who finished with us in the 25 school year relative to now. And those withdrawals, we can track and see that four of our students left Nelson to go to private school, seven to go homeschool, 45 are attending another public school within the state of Virginia, three transferred out of state, and three are what we would call unconfirmed. They just did not return. We recorded them with a W-970, so they will count as dropouts if they are not re-enrolled at some point, or if they moved and have not enrolled elsewhere. So again, that was full-time enrollment. Next, we'll go to funded enrollment. This is different and unfortunately smaller, because we will remove certain groups of students who are impacted by external funding sources. Primary ones are pre-K students, students who receive tuition from the Comprehensive Services Act, and SISNA, or intensive services students. Our 25-26 funded enrollment lands at 1,383.5. This is 57 fewer students than our full-time enrollment, and this is the removal of 32 pre-K students, 16 CSA, or private day students, and nine SISNA students. And I included a similar chart that just shows where these removals, that's the 57 students, are coming from. And you can see it's sprinkled pretty evenly across the grade levels with one, two, or three from each grade level minus grade two. And the last slide, just last year versus this year, we'd see an almost 40-student reduction in our funded enrollment, which obviously will have some implications both for funding, staffing, programming. And we will be discussing this through our budget formation for the next couple of months. If you have any questions?
One of the things we talked about is the small kindergarten class. So the kindergarten class, you know, for lack of a better way, they're COVID babies. And that is also where we've seen an increase in homeschool applications. So we have seen it particularly in that younger grade. Pre-K, we, we don't have a pre-K at Rockfish, and that's something we desperately want to bring back. That's where some of the, the competition of applications with Head Start impact our VPI programs. And so I think that that's something that we're really going to have to think about as we move forward in, in the direction that we want to go with, with maintaining or continuing our Head Start program, and really looking to bolster our pre-K. Pre-K is not necessarily in our funded, but they'd certainly matriculate and want to be able to, to continue with that.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? All right, we're rolling right ahead, Mr. Bellego.
All right, good evening, members of the board. I am here to let you know that we were fortunate enough to receive our VTSS grant for this school year. And we have goals that we're focused on. One is to reduce disciplinary referrals by 10% across all of our schools. The second goal is to reduce chronic absenteeism rate from 18% to 14% as measured by our state reported attendance data. And our final goal is to monitor reading and math benchmark data and ensure a minimum of a 5% increase in the percentage of students making grade-level expectations. So for those of you that may be wondering what is VTSS, it's Virginia Tiered Systems of Supports. So basically, it's a three-tier system. Tier one is making sure we're providing universal, high-quality instruction and supports for all students. Tier two focuses on behaviors of certain students, and then we align practices to help support those students. And then finally, tier three is when we're seeing more noticeable behaviors and we really focus on individualized supports for those students. So our grant funding this year is supporting our school-based VTSS coach that was stipend for those individuals, school-based school improvement leaders, as well as school-based squad team leaders. And those individuals work with our assistant principals and principals to focus on data, both academic and behaviorally, to drive goals and move learning forward. We'll also be implementing Character Strong. Character Strong is a program that's currently implemented, and we've been doing it for three years at the middle school. It focuses on social-emotional behaviors, students making good choices, being kind. And we're going to look to implement that with this funding at both Rockfish and Ty River Elementary Schools as well. We are also using funds to fund PBIS attendants and attendance, pardon me, incentives for students, as well as support professional learning for our staff. So in action, what happens is each month, we meet as a division leadership team, and our assistant principals are a core part of that team, along with our Director of Student Support Service, our behavior specialists, instructional coaches, and we meet with state coaches. And we look at data across the division, and we talk about what's working, what's not working, and then we make plans to adjust to meet our students' needs where they are. And currently, not only do we look at that data quarterly regarding discipline, we also are looking at reevaluating our discipline flow charts. So what do we address in the classroom? What do we address administratively? And we're going to align those across both elementary schools, as well as the middle and the high school, so that way we're speaking the same language across the board. And then finally, we're also working this school year as a team to create a VTSS/MTSS handbook that will be alive and well and will have that in place for next school year, so that way our teachers and administrators will just have a guide and a resource that they can use whenever they have questions or concerns. It'll be, kind of be a go-to for them and, and again, align practices to what we do across all four of our schools. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks so much. Now we will have Mrs. Rachel Loiding with the telehealth grant. Sorry, I kind of want to introduce, right? I mean, she knows what she's doing. We've got the agenda.
All right, well, good evening. I come with more good news on another grant that we've been awarded. Really excited to share with you all that we were one of 15 school divisions in the state of Virginia to be awarded a grant that is in partnership of the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and the VDOE. And so they have a group of state contracted services that provide telehealth, mental health services. And so we selected to go with the agency of UWILL. I did this in collaboration with the school counselors, because UWILL is an organization that allows unlimited referrals, not just for K through 12 students, but for families and staff members for Nelson. To provide, as you can see, there's a list of services that I know you've seen, so they can provide unlimited telehealth per student, some wellness programming to complement the therapy, and obviously, the mental, the telehealth, mental health services really takes down those barriers that we have spoken about earlier that we experience here in Nelson, which is the transportation time, you know, taking off for your jobs and really being able to bring these services in the county. So we were fortunate, if you, I also have a table of the breakdown of the grant award. The total amount of this grant is $103,000 that we can use these funds through June 26th, or through June of this year, or 2026. What we also wanted to include is while this is a really great resource that can be provided to families 24/7, 365, we also wanted to acknowledge... to families 24/7, 365, we also wanted to acknowledge that at times, our students will need this service during the day. And so we didn't, we want to increase that capability to provide that access during the school day, and also not put one more thing on our current staff members. So we have, we were authorized funds in the grant for a telehealth facilitator for their salary and benefits that would be completely grant-funded, really on an instructional assistant salary scale. I did leak a job, it's also a separate document that was submitted, but the job description is linked to this as well. But the idea is the telehealth facilitator would be able to help get students to and from their telehealth sessions, keep them safe, help them if they have connectivity issues, make sure that they're in a confidential location to receive these services. So the vision would be, and we would communicate, you know, with individuals during interviews, that this job position would be shared for all four schools. And maybe, you know, have some sort of daily schedule of which school they're at, and then on Friday, it either being in overflow, or the middle high school campus obviously has the greatest population, so could benefit from an additional day of services. So we're just seeking items for action for approval of that telehealth facilitator for the duration that we are receiving grant funding. And we're just really excited to give our family, our community, our students, staff members, an opportunity to access mental health services.
That's awesome. I think one of the great things to find in follow-up on that would be utilization.
Absolutely.
Like who's, we don't need to know names, obviously, from a HIPAA standpoint, but who's using it? What are the things that potentially, if they can share that back, what are the concerns that people are seeking support on? And then if there's any outcome data where we see improvements? I know from a HIPAA standpoint, we can't, but.
Absolutely. Well, you know, they do have a dashboard. I'm actually meeting with them, I have a meeting with them tomorrow morning. And then because this is grant-funded, Shannon Irvin and I attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there is data that we are gathering on that very topic in terms of how many students are utilizing this service? How are they asking for this service? What is the frequency from referral to actually receiving it? So we'll be analyzing that.
Down the road as a community, we can highlight what are the areas of opportunity for us to better support? And can our community provide something for these families on a larger scale?
Yeah, I'm with you. Thank you.
Great. Good talking to you.
Thanks.
Does it you?
I will do that from here, so apologies. So year after year, we're really, we've been pretty fortunate to be the recipients of funds for the school security grants. And we weren't formally provided any funds for this year. However, retroactively, funds that hadn't been spent last year from others has now been passed over to us. So we've gotten about $50,000, well, almost $51,000 has been reallocated for the 2024 grant funding year to us for this year. So we're pretty excited about that. We continue to communicate our emphasis on safety and security. We've done a lot over the last several years to really build that up, and we'll continue to keep doing that, you know. Last year, we implemented the phased-in approach for our weapons detectors in the towers. We also, you all approved a year ago in a month, the implementation of zero I's. That is fully active. And so by these, using these grants, it's going to contribute, offsetting any kind of cost that there is, but in that these are important investments that we are making in the security of our students, staff, and community. We're bringing in a whole lot more people into our buildings, we're bringing in a whole lot more, so we're looking to try to make sure we do that as safely as possible. So I'm excited over this.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right.
Almost $200,000 in grants that don't come out of our local budget or other budget.
And it's been since 2022, it's been 450?
Well, you got to ask her. You know, unbelievable, but then, yeah, there's been a great deal since the last three years, yes. Oh, a security grant?
Yeah, just security grants. It's been over 450 since 2022, I think.
Oh, the security.
Yeah.
I'm talking totally.
I know, yeah. It's just been phenomenal.
You all have done an amazing job finding the grants and getting them.
Right.
All right, items for action. Do we have any reason not to just roll right through these? Okay. So I'm just going to go. First one is a declaration of beverage cooler assorted technology items and teacher desks as surplus property. I will entertain a motion to approve that action.
I make a motion that we do the surplus of the coolers, desk, and other products to be.
Surplus?
Surplus products.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a field trip request for the BRBGS students to go on an out-of-state trip to Washington DC.
I move that we approve the field trip request for BRBGS students to go out of state to Washington DC, February 26, 2026.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have the approval for the contract for the RFP for the SPED teacher contracted services that Rachel was writing. I just.
This is a different position.
Different position.
This is, we are struggling to find SPED teachers, and so we are looking to try to do an RFP for contracting those services.
Contracting.
Okay, all right.
I move we approve the contract from RFP to SPED teacher contracted services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need to approve new temporary positions to support the telehealth grant. This is the one she just talked about.
I move that we approve the new temporary positions to support the telehealth grant.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need approval of the new temporary position to support the Head Start program.
I move we approve the new temporary position to support the Head Start program as presented.
Second. All in favor? No questions?
Aye.
Aye. Are everybody in favor? Okay, I'm sorry. Now we need to amend the January School Board meeting date to be January 15. Does everybody remember why we're doing that?
It's a little painful to come back from a person's break.
There's a lot going on to be able to make that happen because we actually, our kids come back on the 7th. So that's super taxing to have everybody come back.
It's reminiscent of when we did a school board meeting one time on the first day of school.
Yeah, yeah, that was brutal.
Sorry, yes.
It was even brutal for us.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm down. I need to have a motion and a.
You're not even going to be here.
I move.
Yeah.
January School Board meeting date to January 15, 2025.
I second. 2026.
2026, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we, oh, so we did not talk about the delegate proposals, so if you guys, there is a little package of them. So every year in March, the VSBA asks all of the school boards to come up with ideas of ways that they can amend their legislative positions. And it's, this is the time of year that, I guess it's new governor or whatever, or it's always around this time. And so then the, mostly Fairfax, but a lot of school systems submit things that they need, they think need to be changed or whatever in the legislative position. Some of them are new, some of them are amendments. And then they go to a committee, the committee goes through them, and then they vote for the ones that they think they should go to the entire, well, there's always one delegate from every school board at the convention, and that delegate has the responsibility of getting their board to vote on these positions, so that when we, in the school board convention, when the delegates meet, that delegate from our school board would be able to represent the entire school board on how we would vote on these changes or new legislative positions. So this year is pretty light, thank God. There was like 10 or 11, and they're all in this like 90-page booklet, but they only had three. The first one was about assessment reform and accountability reform. So as Dr. Hester was speaking about earlier, we have new CUT scores, and we have a different accountability system this year, and it was just like, I'm trying not to be political about this, but it was kind of like abrupt, abrupt changes. So the legislative position that was brought forward this year was, if you're going to make any changes to the assessment or accountability, you got to give us time, about a, you know, we would like a year to be able to prep for it, get the kids ready, get our systems ready and all that, don't change anything like that. So we need to just decide if we want to go yes on that one or no on that one. The second proposal was removing, this is a new one, taking chronic absenteeism out of the indicators for the accountability and accreditation models. So right now, if we don't, if we have like a certain level of chronic absenteeism, our accountability is changed, or it's taken into account. Exactly.
So it's good to know that like chronic absenteeism is all absences that aren't related to the school, so that means excused absences.
Right.
That means suspensions, that means unexcused. So I think really, the crux of it is there are things far outside the control of schools that are impacting us, and there's nothing that we can do. I mean, obviously, we don't want sick children or sick staff members, but there are some things. Now, that isn't to say that like chronic absenteeism is a huge negative impact on student learning. So, you know, there is a part to this. You take that away, and it still doesn't take away the fact, when our kids are in front of our teachers, they learn. So I think it's important to note that, but the really big part of this that's so very frustrating is excused absences still count towards chronic absenteeism. It does not, it is not truancy. So they're two very, very different things. And so chronic illnesses, through no fault of the child or the family, those chronic illnesses, they still count, for lack of a better way, against us. And that's just a difficult spot to put anybody in, and I think that that is a big part of this.
So they are recommending, or in this proposal is that we are going to advocate for that chronic absenteeism to be taken away as an indicator in our accountability. What?
Nothing.
Sorry.
So to be clear, the proposed new legislation position is not to eliminate the chronic absenteeism policy statewide, it is to eliminate it from consideration for accreditation score.
Right.
Okay.
And this is not, I mean, just so people understand, this is not that we vote this in as a VSBA. It's what we're supporting at a higher legislative level.
Right, so.
This is the advocacy piece.
Yes, right. So and I am the delegate, and I will go, and I will vote. So in some cases, like they would say, no, we don't want to do that, and I would say to myself, yeah, I do want to do that, and I still have to vote no because the majority of my board says no. So that has happened too. It's pretty interesting to watch, actually. Anyway, the third one is also kind of easy. I think these are easy yeses, but it's an enrollment cap for Virtual Virginia, so that there is a certain number of either kids or dollars that you can spend taking virtual classes, and they want, it hasn't been updated for 20 years, and they want to adjust that. So more people, more students have access to this, to this Virtual Virginia, you know.
That helps us with AP, dual enrollment.
Right.
Yeah, it helps us in a lot of, so. The thing, the tricky thing about dual enrollment is you have to have specific certifications for the educator, for the teacher, and that's just super difficult. And so when you want to be able to provide these pathways, like AP classes, dual enrollment classes, that are really valuable to a lot of our students, it gets taken away just because of a staffing issue. And so this is a great way to be able to still continue to provide that, particularly if a student is amenable and good at that online environment.
Right, and I mean, they just basically say, this budget priority needs to be revised to raise the free enrollment cap that will provide additional flexibility to divisions wishing to alleviate staffing issues by using the state's Virtual Virginia program while expanding opportunities for students. I mean, that pretty much says it all, so. We could vote on these individually? Just to consensus on all three? Okay, that's fine.
All right. So I move that we approve the VSBA delegate proposal positions as presented, all three of them.
Yes, all of them, yeah.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect. Now we would go into closed session.
We did have a last second.
Thing we need to go into, and this would be for employee, for students or employees?
Student.
Student. Okay, got it? It's on the also on here.
Legal, legal, legal.
Legal?
Sorry, legal, yep.
Okay.
So, wait a minute. Just legal or student in legal?
Yes, just legal.
Okay, all right. That's why I like doing all three.
I make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by school board council in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in closed session. Thank you guys so much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.